I'm going to call the meeting to order. I just want to say before I do, Selectwoman Leffowitz is unable to attend today. She's traveling for work. And so if we could just rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Okay, item number three, to consider an act upon the minutes of October 18th, 2021, and October 25th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I guess I have to second. Is there any discussion on this item?
None from me.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is to hear and consider an act upon the placement of a memorial plaque at the base of the flagpole on the town green in honor of the late Captain Michael J. Daley, World War II Medal of Honor recipient and Fairfield resident. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, and I know that Mr. Daley's daughter, Deidra, was going to try to call in, but she's traveling. Deidra, are you on the line? Okay, it appears that she isn't able to get on, so I'm just going to read a statement from Deidra, and then I'll, did actually get two additional emails from residents that I'll also share for the record. But Deidra wrote, "Our family is deeply grateful for this kind honor and remembrance for their father. My father was raised on a farm in Fairfield. The town honored him when he came home from the war with hundreds of people waiting for his arrival in the pouring rain at the Fairfield train station. My parents settled in Fairfield and their three grandsons have grown up here. The fact our family has such deep roots in this town makes this recognition all the more meaningful for us. We very much look forward to the installation of this plaque on the town flagpole. Thank you." If you want to just say we did receive kind statements, emails from residents Pat Carroll and Peter Tallman. Pat wrote, "I just wanted to let Brenda and the board know how thrilled and happy I was to learn of a memorial plaque that will be placed at the base of the flagpole in honor of my everlasting close friend, Captain Michael J. Daley, Medal of Honor recipient. When I had an opportunity to visit his grave at Oaklawn Cemetery and render the captain as a well-deserved salute. I remember his dad, a highly decorated Colonel of World War II and World War I and World War II, leading Memorial Day parades. And few in town have these memories. I often wonder how many of our citizens know the Michael Daley story. He quit as a cadet at the U.S. Military Academy to join the Army and was soon involved in combat, which led him to receiving his award, Medal of Honor. Humble man, and I'm certain he will be most proud of the recognition." And Peter Tallman also just wrote that he never saw more grown men weeping at a funeral than when Mr. Daley passed away, and he thinks this is a lovely honor. And I just want to open it up, and I want to thank Mr. Selectwoman Flynn for bringing this issue up to me, to in my administration, to put the wheels in motion. And I'm just going to open it up for comments from you, Mr. Flynn.
Thanks, Ms. Kupchak. Appreciate it very much, and thanks for your support and the support of the administration to get this done, as well as for the contribution of Joe Reynis, who, a citizen here in town who grew up, knew Mr. Daley and the Daley family very well. And he and I have been speaking about this for quite some time. Through former State Representative Jack Stone, it was my honor to have breakfast with Mr. Daley in Southport a number of years ago when I was new to public service. And what amazed me about the man was how humble he was, and how all he wanted to do was talk about others and not himself. He was gracious, he was a gentleman, he was kind. And obviously, after I read the book that was written about his heroics and his life story, he was a courageous, courageous man. And I'm not surprised at all with Mr. Tallman's comments about people crying at his funeral a number of years ago, remembering what he did for them throughout his lifetime. He was also honored by St. Vincent's, that named their renovations after him a number of years ago, for all his hard work and dedication to that hospital. I agree with you, First Selectwoman Kupchak, it'd be nice if the public knew more about Michael Daley these number of years after his passing and remembered him. And if this flagpole dedication helps in that, and helps to honor all of our veterans, that's even better. And I'm sure he would look down and smile at that thought. So, thank you. I look forward to this dedication, and it couldn't be more well-deserved by somebody from this town. And I believe I'm correct in saying that Mr. Daley is the only Medal of Honor winner to come from the town of Fairfield. So, congratulations to he and his family on a life well-lived.
Thank you. And I just want to, just one more time, see if Deidra was able to get on and I didn't notice. Okay. All right. Well, I think this is going to be really lovely addition to our veterans ceremony this year, and I'm looking forward to that. He's quite an honorable person, and we're very honored to have him from our town. There's no further comment, all in favor of this item?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And thank you again, Mr. Flynn, for your bringing this to our attention. It's going to be really lovely.
Brenda, thanks to you and the administration and Mr. Bremer for your efforts in all of this. Appreciate it.
So our next item is item number five, to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into a proposed contract with Axon Enterprises Incorporated to provide Axon 10-year, a 10-year Officer Safety Plan 7+ Premium-10-Year Program and an Axon 10-Year Fleet 3-Advanced Plan program for the Police Department, effective January 15, 2022 through 1/14/2032, per Axon Enterprises' proposal. Q reference number dated 10/26/2021, per Sourcewell Contract Award, in the amount not to exceed Funding for these programs is available in account number listed on the agenda, and this is an ARPA account funding, Public Health Project category. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, and we have Gerald Foley on the line to assist presenting this with Chief Calamares and Sergeant Mike Stahl. And we also have our CFO, Jared Schmidt, on the line as well. Gerald, do you want to take it off? You're on mute, Gerald. Gerald, you're on mute.
Thank you. I was muted. Sorry about that. Yeah, so what you have before you is, this is, it's called an Officer Safety Plan. We have two components of it. The first one consists of body-worn camera equipment, and second component is TASER equipment. And then the next component is an Axon Fleet Advanced Plan. And so you, all of these are fully integrated, so what we'll end up having is, with the first Axon Officer Safety Plan, all the officers will be equipped with body-worn cameras, and we're also going to have signal sidearm kits, extended warranty program with the TASERS. We're going to be, all the officers will be equipped with a fully operational TASER that will include the handles, the holsters, battery pack, docking stations, and the like. That also includes annual training and a certification program with Axon. And then the other phase or the other component is the Axon Fleet 3-Advanced Plan, which will basically have, fitting all of the police vehicles with cameras. So we're going to have dual-view cameras that will be front-facing, and we're also going to have rear-facing interior cameras. And that'll equip the Fairfield Police Department. It's basically set up as an initial allocation of equipment, and then annually, we have basically a refresh. We have the TASERS, we will get, we as the town will obtain, we'll get cartridges, and in addition, on an annual basis, we'll get all the cartridges. We'll also get training and certification. On the body-worn cameras, those will be refreshed every two and a half years, or approximately maybe 30 months. And then on the fleet vehicles, that system will be refreshed basically twice during the program, initially, and then again in five years.
Thank you, Gerald.
Mr., before we leave, Mr. Foley, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Did this just go through the normal RFP process and all this? How is this handled, just to make sure we're on the up and up?
So what we elected to do was, is this is a very unique product, so I assisted the Police Department in going through sourcing what companies could provide a fully bundled package. And we elected to go with this company, Axon, because we felt that they had the most comprehensive plan in place. So you have all of the components that will be all fully integrated, and everything all links together. It's all under one program, and we thought that that was the best method to approach this.
But this was an independent, I guess what I'm trying to say is if there were other companies that could hit these markers, they were included in this analysis?
Yes, so I'll defer to the Police Department on that, but I did it independently of them. I looked to see if I could find a company that would provide all these same services, and I couldn't find one. This company seems to be, numerous police departments throughout the country are utilizing the same company for these same services, and I couldn't find another company that did all of the same things. But I'll defer to the Police Department to see if they can have any other additional information to add.
Chief, can you just opine on that, please?
Sure, yeah. This company, Axon, basically, they have cornered the market in this type of product. They, not only with body camera technology, but redaction technology and software, in addition to the TASERS themselves. Axon is the overarching company of TASER, as most people would know. The TASER Electronic Weapon System, they have transitioned now to Axon, which now Axon does all police-related accountability, I guess you could say, to include training for de-escalation and empathy training.
Okay.
And part of the package that we're putting together includes all of that.
And before we get on, thank you, and before we get on to the specifics of the technology and all that kind of stuff, just a few administrative items. Number one, this is coming from the ARPA funds. Mr. Schmidt, does this equal what we essentially put in the ARPA funds? So is the funding there specific to this, or are we higher or lower?
The amount that we put in the ARPA funds was 3.7 million, so there is an additional 5,000 here. It's a small amount that, you know, we have options for how we could get that money, either through miscellaneous contingency, or, you know, we always have the option to go back to the board and ask for an additional authorization there. So we have, because it's such a small amount, we have options.
Okay, so we can either take it from miscellaneous contingency, and of course, the ARPA funds aren't set in stone, right, in terms of the utilization, so there might be some money left over in the, in other areas of the ARPA funds that can go towards this. But we're within $5,000 on a 3.7 million item, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Has Mr. Baldwin reviewed the contract on this? So contractually, are we in good shape on this? Hello?
I don't think Attorney Baldwin's on, but he has reviewed this contract, as he does all contracts before they're put on the agenda. But we've been working on this for a while. Obviously, this has been something that presented during, going back, the original ARPA, and we have discussed this, you know, all the technology, everything it does, the police have done quite a few presentations.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
But, yeah, the contract has been reviewed. I don't know if he's on there.
Yeah, I'm just questioning, I know sometimes Mr. Baldwin will say that a contract is 95% done, and he's waiting on a couple of open items, and we need to change kind of the language in the approval. So if somebody could just, if somebody at Town Hall could just call Mr. Baldwin and just get an answer whether we further our discussion on this, I just appreciate it. I want to make sure we do it the right way, that's all. And you're absolutely right, Brenda, regarding the technology and all that kind of stuff, and I appreciate the efforts in explaining that. With that, yeah, go ahead.
Can I just quickly comment? I think by afternoon on Friday, Mr. Baldwin was finalizing the contracts with the attorneys at Axon before we put it together for a presentation. So I'm pretty certain that he, not only he, but Gerald have worked very diligently on this project to assist our Police Department in getting it all ready for the presentation today.
Thanks. Gerald, did you know of any legal issues?
No. I reiterate what Chief Calamares was saying, is that Attorney Baldwin had gone through it, he was comfortable with it. I think there was one or two minor items that he didn't think were consequential, that they were going to be putting in an addendum to their contract. And that was as of late Friday.
Quick, quick few questions here. I actually got some questions from the public, too. I don't want to cut anybody off, so Chief, if you want to speak, I'll hold my questions till after you speak, however you and the First Selectwoman want to handle it.
I'll answer whatever questions you have regarding this.
Okay. Quick question. Have the funds actually, Gerald, have the funds of ARPA, have we received any funds yet?
Yes, we have, we've received $12.4 million.
That's what I thought. So are we going to actually, what's the funding of this? Does the 3.7 go out right away, or how long, how is the 3.7 split here?
Yeah, this is, so it's Gerald Foley. So what we did is, we have it set up so that we're paying an annual amount. We basically have it so that we're paying it over five years. We know the ARPA has to have it paid in less than five, but we thought that that'd be the most prudent thing to do, is to start out with annual payments, and then as we proceed year to year, we'll make that determination on when we're going to make the final payment.
Is that supposed to say that the final payment might be a prepay of the last
Correct.
couple of years of this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, but what about the upfront payment, Gerald? Because you have an upfront payment, and then you have an annual payment.
Yeah, so what we're doing is, the initial, we have it set up over years one through five, so the first payment will be $741,064.07, and that amount repeats for years one through five.
Okay, so you're actually not paying more upfront. Got it.
No, no. I may, I may misspoke, I'm sorry.
So, Chief, do we, are the, do we currently use a lot of TASERS in town?
Yeah, we have several deployments a year. It's, I would, so I think, I know one of the questions were, why do we receive so many, so many cartridges that go with the system? So each TASER is carried by every officer, so we're getting 110 TASERS, and each TASER holds two cartridges. So we're basically having an extra set of cartridges that go into the TASER, and then two additional for spares for each TASER. So that's where you get that count from of the 440. Does that answer your question?
It does. And the other thing is-
One set of spares for each TASER.
Got it. And this is all fully integrated, as you said, the body cam systems, the car cam systems, and then, of course, the TASERS are separate. Is that correct?
That's correct. So if, let's say, for example, a camera comes on, or your body camera is on, it will all integrate with not only the car camera, but the TASER, and there's a signaling device when your sidearm is removed from the holster also. So all these things automatically turn on the body camera so that there's no question as to whether the cameras are turned on.
Now, are we, are we replacing current technology? Are we, is this, and I guess the way I want to say this is, are we wasting money on stuff we've already had? Or is this, is the stuff we've already had pretty well-aged out, or not functioning, or what have you?
Well, I'd love to say that we are replacing equipment that we already have, but this is just a completely, a completely different product. You know, everything is manually done on the system that we have. We don't have enough for the amount of officers that we have. They were purchased before the Police Accountability Act, which now requires additional, I guess, technology that is included with the new product and that is not included with the old product that we have since, I think it was 2016, 2014, probably, at least.
Right. That was kind of my understanding, that this Police Accountability Act was going to require us, regardless of the ARPA funds, to implement this such technology. Is that a fair statement?
It's a fair statement.
And are the courts starting to ask for this more? Is that also true?
So at the bottom of every single report that a police officer writes on every engagement that they make with the public, they're required to write that this interaction was recorded on my personal body-worn camera.
Okay, and then it's up to the courts as to whether they ask for it or not?
Yes, and I can say we get multiple requests for camera footage daily.
Got it. And you, I guess, based on your earlier comments, you're very comfortable with this, Axon Enterprises?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time to re-answer my questions.
My pleasure.
And I see Attorney, I asked Attorney Baldwin to sign on. He's on. Attorney Baldwin, would you like to just answer Mr. Flynn's question earlier regarding the contract, and that you reviewed it, or if there was any issues?
Yes. Good afternoon. Jim Baldwin here. I'd be happy to answer those questions. Just by way of background, I can tell you that I had many, many, many questions about the multiple terms and agreements, the collateral agreements that go with this, but after reviewing those agreements, after reviewing the Sourcewell master agreement, and having my questions answered, I am comfortable with all the terms and conditions.
Jim, there was no, there's nothing that you were specifically concerned about after your review?
After my questions were answered about the scheduling, which Gerald worked very hard and diligently on, and he picked up on that before I could even comment, the answer is no, I have no issues with the agreements.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you jumping on in short notice, too, Jim.
You bet. I'm sorry I wasn't there for you in the beginning.
That's all the questions I have. Chief, I don't know if I, and again, my apologies if I short-circuited any presentation you had.
Not at all.
No, thank you. So if there's no further questions, we've obviously all had the full presentation on this item several times.
Yep.
If there's no further questions from Mr. Flynn, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Gerald, I believe you're on for the next item.
Yes, yep.
Our chief and Sergeant Stahl can exit gracefully.
Thank you.
They've left. Hi, guys.
Bye.
Okay, our next item is item number six, and it is Roger Sherman. Can I get a motion to approve Roger Sherman Elementary School Building Committee to hear a final project summary from the Roger Sherman School Building Committee on Phase 3 of the renovation project, and to hear and consider an act upon the disbandment of the Roger Sherman Elementary School Building Committee? Wow, it's been a long time. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. So I will open it up for anyone who would like to make some comments. I see the chairwoman, Ms. Vitale, is on the line. I see the, I believe it's the chairperson of the building committee is on the line. So if either one of you would like to share any comments?
Sure, I can kick it off if that's all right with you, Christine?
That is fine with me, Chairman Lang.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name is Eric Lang. For the past three years, I've had the privilege of chairing the Roger Sherman Building Committee and leading a dedicated group of volunteers to oversee the project, which we believe makes that school a safer and healthier place for our children. The, overall, the project, I believe, went very smoothly despite being executed through COVID. It did present some of its, some challenges in staffing, construction crews, and procuring materials, but overall, the project was complete in time, largely in time for the first day of school of 2020, and came in under budget, both for the master budget as well as the FEMA budget. And we are slated to recognize over $700,000 in reimbursement for the town through the OS-CGR process. So I think that summarizes, you know, the project at a macro level. Ms. Vitale, is there anything else you would like to add?
No, just on behalf of the Board of Ed and our community, I want to thank you and your committee for your overseeing this during the pandemic. I don't think that you were really signing on for as long as this took, and very thankful for your due diligence, for all of your work, and excited for that school community, just to have the infrastructure of that school up to code, and to have mechanical means of fresh air is something that we've all been working for. So thank you, and please extend my thanks to your committee.
I will.
Even though they're disbanded.
And Chairman Lang, assumed to be ex, former chairman, I just want to say on behalf of the town of Fairfield, we thank you, sincerely thank you. We know it's a thankless job to serve, especially on building committees, you know, with a lot of effort and time and behind-the-scenes work that the average citizen doesn't see or recognize the value and the time and effort that you put in. And I've been involved with education issues for a very long time, and served on the Board of Ed for six years, and know the work that goes in to building committees and how much effort and time. So I wanted to just sincerely thank you on behalf of the residents of Fairfield for your time and dedication.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Do you have to open it up, Mr. Flynn?
Yeah, thank you. Chairman Lang, first of all, thank you for your work and efforts, and please extend my personal gratitude to the members of your committee for all their hard work and effort. Greatly appreciated, and congratulations on a job well done, and coming in under budget is just, particularly in these difficult times, is a big accomplishment. Chairwoman Vitale, my first question, I guess, would be for you, and somebody, there's a lot of noise in the background, a lot of ruffling of papers or something by somebody. So I've been around long enough to know that we had to chunk the renovations of Sherman School out over a period of phases, and as we listed here, this was Phase 3. Where do we stand now relative to that school? Where do we stand now relative to that school and renovation needs and remodeling needs of that school? Was Phase Three, please remind me, is, are we done now, pretty much, with that school for now?
For the short term, I would say we're done. As you know, things like bathrooms need to be updated over time, but the infrastructure of the school in terms of the electrical, the mechanical means of fresh air, that was the big piece that was left open. We're not going to be adding any more classrooms to that site. As you know, you may recall, we're up against FEMA guidelines there. So what we can do at that space, part of the reason why it's been chunked is because of the FEMA reimbursement. And I thank Mr. Lang for just the due diligence in keeping that cap. You know, they had their budget and then they also had to be very mindful that they weren't going over the FEMA cap as well. So right now, there's, there's no, there might be some, depending on what happens in the future with enrollment, whether or not a stage needs to be put in a different place. But right now, that school is done.
Okay. And Mr. Lang, was there things, were there items in the original plans of any significance that needed to be value engineered out? Or did we basically keep the, what we had going in?
Originally, the, the project did include the addition of a stage to the gymnasium, which was value engineered out after we received our initial cost estimates. The, as Ms. Vitale mentioned, the, the main scope of, of work of the project originally, in addition to that stage, was air conditioning for the entire building and a new sprinkler system for the entire building, which that school did not have. And as I mentioned, the initial estimates for those areas of work did exceed initial budgets and therefore, the new stage had to be value engineered from the project.
So, so we got the sprinklers and we got the air conditioning and you sacrificed the stage?
Yep, and we got lockers and we got some site improvements as well.
How was the school in the, was the school, and forgive me for asking or interrupting, was the school kind of administration, the local, the principal, were they part of the decision that said, we can do without the skate, stage and still deliver the program? I'm assuming yes.
Yes, Dr. Banner participated and, and attended almost every meeting that we had.
Okay. And Mrs. Vitale, you guys on the Board of Ed are okay with that? You understood what was going on with the program there and how they're going to be able to deliver it at the present time without it, without the stage?
At the present time, we are comfortable with that and we gave that guidance early on to the building committee in terms of things that need to be value engineered out. You know, appreciate there might be times where the entire school needs to meet for an assembly, but think that we can be creative and possibly use the space at Roger Local Middle School, for example, for a concert or a graduation, that there's other school space that potentially could be used in the short term.
Okay.
The priority was just getting the sprinkler in, getting the lockers in, which were very old, getting the mechanical means of fresh air and doing the site work just to help with the traffic around that school, which was a concern for the neighbors for a certain period of time. So that, all that work was done. The building committee, you know, did consult with the Board of Ed throughout the process. And as Mr. Lang said, Dr. Banner was involved as well throughout.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. And the next question I have regards more process and quite, in the two years I've been on the Board of Selectmen now, this is the first time we've actually disbanded a building committee. So forgive the process question here. We're still waiting on the final audit and determination from the state as regards the reimbursement and I guess from FEMA as well, just for their final sign off. Is that correct?
That's correct. I have not gone through an OSCG in our process myself, but from what I understand from Sal Morabito at Fairfield Public Schools, who, who has, you know, the process could be very lengthy. I think he's stated, and I don't recall exactly which schools, but sometimes that process could take in excess of, of 10 years. So it was, you know, under that guidance that we decided to request disband and knowing that the, the process is in motion and that there really is not any further action that needs to be taken by the building committee as it relates to that process.
Is this, I'm going to ask this to both Mrs. Vitale and as the Town Attorney, Mr. Baldwin. Is this standard operating procedure that we disband these building committees before we get through this process? And Mrs. Vitale, if so, who on your team, who, who does the full-time staff member that has responsibility for managing this process through to, to reimbursement?
The, the Board of Ed has accepted this project as complete as per our Ed spec. And Mr. Morabito and Mr. Papa George would be overseeing the, you know, the communication with the state at this particular time. And of course, the superintendent, you know.
Yeah.
Over, overseeing them. I don't know if Mr. Baldwin, Mr. Baldwin has anything to add to that?
Yeah, Mr. Baldwin, is there any risk, yeah, is there any risk here in disbanding this building committee without having the reimbursement finalized or what have you?
This is Attorney Baldwin. The answer is no. I mean, there are always risks, right? But in, in the procedural sense, there are, are no such risks. As a matter of fact, the procedural guidelines for building committees stipulates that there are to be expected post-completion activities that are naturally assumed by the, what do we call it, the originating town agency, which in this case would be the, the Board of Ed. So this is customary and appropriate.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the clarification. And congratulations once again and thanks for a job well done.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And thank you, thank you again for your time and service.
Thank you.
Mr. Lang, you can feel that big weight being lifted right off your shoulders, right? The seat is getting a lot cooler.
But now we, now we know who he is. We're going to use him again.
All right, anytime.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number seven, tax refunds. Can I get a motion to consider an act upon the tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of 14,088.99?
So moved.
Is there any discussion on this item?
None for me.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And just before we adjourn, I just have a couple of items. Excuse me. The November Tree, Tree of Hope is lit at Sherman Green this month in honor of the Epilepsy Foundation of Connecticut, which is dedicated to improving the lives of people with epilepsy and their families. So have a definitely a look at that. The foundation offers first aid and other training and resources to family members to gain a better understanding how to care for someone with epilepsy. So stop by their, the Sherman Green this weekend. You'll know why it's lit that way. And I just want to announce that I officially swore in our new town librarian last week. And his name, it's hard to pronounce, Scott Jarzamak, will be serving as our new town librarian. And he was the executive director of the Albany Public Library. He's very excited to begin. I'll be putting something in the newsletter Friday, a little bit more about him. So look for that. And if you have time to stop by the library, not only Board Selectmen or anyone listening to greet our new town librarian, that would be amazing. And I think that is all I have. Is there anything that you have, Ms. Selectmen Flynn?
No, the only thing is tomorrow's election day, so get out and vote.
There you go. Okay, I do want to know, someone brought this up in an email and I, I did send out an election information email on Friday, but I know someone mentioned about curbsides, if there was curbside voting available for residents. And I, I, I didn't, this had come in after I had sent out. So I just want to announce to our public who may be listening that for those residents who feel uncomfortable still, there is the option to vote curbside if they would like to. So all of that will be managed at each of the polling locations. So that's the only information I wanted to share about election day. And that's all I have on my end. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night, everyone.
Take care. Thanks, everybody.
All right, bye-bye now.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.